I'd like to call the meeting, City Council, to order at 6:04 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Navarrete.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Tillman. Williams.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Patton.
Here.
Smith.
With five members answering the call, we do have a quorum to start the meeting and conduct business. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we'd like to call up Pastor Stokes to offer a word of prayer as we start the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Our God and our Father, we thank you for this and that opportunity to come and give you thanks and praise. We thank you for your kindness. We thank you for your goodness. We thank you for caring for us and protecting us and bringing us to the conclusion of another day. We want to let you know we're so grateful. We ask tonight that you would continue to protect us, to look on us, our families, and to give us good health and success. We ask to continue blessings upon Cayman City and its residents. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Tonight, we want to welcome our newest appointed attorney, Attorney Michael Stillman. Want to welcome him to the Cayman City team and thank him for the work that he has to do ahead of us. We have a lot going on in 2023, but we're looking forward to great 2024. But again, want to welcome Attorney Michael Stillman to the City Council and the team.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Look forward to working with everyone.
Welcome.
All right, tonight, we're at the roll call. We did a public comment. Well, we're at the public comment phase. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on any items on the agenda As of 10:00 AM this morning, we have not received any email comments or any email statements. Also, for the record, at 6:07 PM, we have Alderman Tillman in the meeting and also Alderman Smith in the meeting at 6:07 PM. Alderman, we are at the public comment phase. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on any items on the agenda? If not, we will move forward with the agenda. Item five on the agenda is for approval of minutes. You have the minutes before you as presented to the City Council that was sent to everyone. Are there any questions or any changes to the minutes as presented?
Make a motion to approve 5A through D.
Motion made by Alderman Patton to approve the minutes 5A through D. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Navarrete.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Item six are reports of standing committees. Finance, Alderman Gardner.
No report tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Public safety, Alderman Williams.
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Public utilities, Alderman Patton.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinances and resolutions, Alderman Tillman.
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Alderman, do you want to wait for that other ordinance or you want to report on that other ordinance or just say it tonight?
We could talk about it when we come to vote on it.
Okay. Health, education, and welfare, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. Happy Kwanzaa. Today is the third principal of Ujima. We will have a Health, Education, and Welfare Committee meeting in January when we have come to a date that is good for all of the committee members. That is all.
Permits and licensing, Alderman Smith.
No report.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Works, Alderman Navarrete.
Thank you, Mayor. Just another brief announcement. We've been dodging the snow, it seems like so. In case we do get a snowfall, just a reminder to residents to please utilize their driveways, their garages. And if you do have a snow route, designated snow route, no parking, be aware of that. If there's an issue with that that you feel, you can call Public Works to try to plead your case there, but it would have to be a very special circumstance, I think. But try to abide by those. Try to find somewhere to park in anticipation so we can get our snowplow trucks safely through the streets and get those cleaned up. That's all I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. City Council reports. Alderman Smith.
Just want to remind the residents, the monthly town hall will be the third month, I'm sorry, the third week of January, and wish all the residents of the city happy holidays and safe new year as we go into the new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Patton.
Nothing this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to first start off just wishing happy holidays to all the Fifth Ward residents. Hope you all had a wonderful Christmas. I wish you guys a happy new year. Be on the lookout for the holiday card from myself and my family. If you have any other questions, concerns, or issues in the ward, please continue to reach out to my office at 708-891-8195. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, God makes all things possible. I want to let the residents know that there will be no ward meeting this coming Monday in January. We will resume ward meetings in February, first Monday in February at 6:30, Daly Park. And also, continue to call the office with cares and concerns, 708-891-8194 or 708-212-2240. And I just want to wish the residents of Cayman City and the extended family of Cayman City a very happy holidays and a happy new year.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to wish the residents of the Third Ward a happy new year, and if you have any issues, call my office at 708-891-8193. That's all.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you. Alderman Wilson, Council report.
Thank you. On January 3rd, 2023, the Second Ward meeting will be held from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM at Higher Ground Community Church. That's 4:15 Saginaw. We will not be there all evening, so a little before 8:00, we'll start wrapping up so we can be in our cars at 8:00 PM. Again, that's Wednesday, January 3rd, 2024, from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM, Higher Ground, 4:15 Saginaw. January 13th, 2023, I am proud to partner with the Tomorrow's Youth Foundation for the Empowered Choices Mentee Luncheon that will be held January 13th, 2024, from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM. If you would like to join the mentee luncheon, it is for returning mentor program participants and those that would like to join the mentor program, please call 708-418-2003 to put your name on the list, or you can email C. Wilson at tomorrow'syouthfoundation.org. Also, on January 13th, 2024, we're going to have cocktails and conversation with the alderwomen. Tickets will be released on January 1st, and that will be at Don Pedro's. We have spoken as a ward, and we do understand that mishaps happen with the mail. And speaking with the local mail department or postal service, please, if you don't mind keeping your porch lights on and securing your animals, your pets, just create a safer atmosphere for our postal carriers. It's getting darker sooner. They're having a hard time maneuvering up and down the block if no one keeps their lights on. So let's go ahead and create an atmosphere that's safe for our postal workers. Turn your porch lights on and secure your pets. Also, as the weather becomes colder, bring those animals on in. Sometimes I hear dogs outside as late as 2:00 AM. So please bring those pets in. Second ward, I am proud of you. We have helped 150 families during the Christmas season. Everyone that needed our assistance got our assistance. So thank you for pitching in and showing a unified ward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Navarrete, City Council reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, a reminder, there will be a First Ward Town Hall, January 10th. That will be 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. That'll be at the VFW Post 8141. That's 664 Hirsch, the corner of Hirsch and Pulaski. Again, the discussion will be around the Burnham Avenue revitalization plan, updates to that plan, and also focus on St. Victor, the St. Victor site. Again, as those of you know, that was a closed in 2020 decision from the Chicago Archdiocese, but when it closed, it was the most attended church in Cayman City. The Archdiocese, they don't like to use the word merged, but the three Catholic churches in town merged to St. Andrews Church and now congregate there. The St. Victor site has since been left vacant, so excited to start discussions with the Archdiocese of Chicago and the Jesus Shepherd of Souls, which is now the new parish for St. Andrews and Our Lady of Noc and St. Victor, to start those discussions, to think of some creative ideas for the site. Certainly something that we need to focus on and reactivate for the neighborhood and the community. That's all I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Under the Mayor's report, just from my family to all the Cayman City residents, to my colleagues, I'd like to wish you guys a healthy 2024. This is our last City Council meeting of 2023. We want to, you know, been some challenges this year, but we've all made it to the end. We want to thank God for allowing us to not only see another day, but also see another year. 2024, we want to get aggressive. We want to make sure the residents understand of all of our upcoming economic development projects and also all of our infrastructure projects are coming to a close. We look forward to bringing them to the residents in 2024. We also look forward to celebrating with families. We want everyone to be safe this holiday season. We also want everyone to look out for one another, and if there's someone less fortunate that you know about, please help them. Please let the city know about them. We will try to help as much as we can. But again, from my family to the entire Cayman City community, my colleagues, I want to wish you guys a healthy 2024 and as we get forward, look forward to a great year in The next item is informational items, item eight. We have one item, item 8A. Is there a motion to accept item 8A and place it on file? So move. Second. Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Tillman. Alderman, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, City Council. Item nine, a new business. We have a bunch of requests to our city attorney for RFPs. This is not final action, but we're requesting our city attorney to draft these RFPs and bring them back before the City Council. So this is not final action, but this is the start of some of our first-time homebuyers program and then also some of our economic development plans that we're laying for the city. So we're asking the council to approve these motions to direct our city attorney to draft these RFPs. Some of this we discussed at our special meeting. The human resources suite we discussed and a couple other items we discussed. So I wanted to mention that before we take action on new business items. Under nine, new business items, are there any questions regarding new business items? Alderman Patton.
Please call Alderman Navarrete and discuss the other first.
Oh, you're fine.
Alderman.
Either way, item number seven, to approve the tentative, what does that mean, reinvestment? I didn't see that initiative in the supplemental. I think there's a draft of it, though, that I did see in one of our meetings.
It was sent to Alderman. It's a project that Alderman Gardner was working on with the first-time homebuyers program. We had a Zoom meeting with the attorneys to discuss taking our vacant homes and actually putting them in the process. We didn't want to just, we were looking for developers, so we want to bring out this process, and we sent it to Alderman of what the program will be with all of our homes. We just started purchasing homes. We got our first 18 homes. And then we also looking at purchase more homes within this process through our no-cash bid process.
Oh, yeah. I'm familiar with the program. I think it's gone, come a long way, so it's good to see that we're progressing on the idea. But I know that was in a draft format, that Zoom. Is there a final form of that document now or still draft?
Yeah, still a draft.
So we're approving a draft or tentative? What does tentative mean?
Just to have the initiative, Alderman. We talked about the initiative, had everyone on it. So as we start moving this process forward, want to approve a tentative, and then coming back to the City Council will be the final draft in January or February.
So we're approving a tentative and a final draft is yet to come and we'll approve that one?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Patton.
My questions were similar to Alderman Navarrete's, so I would ask that... Sorry. My questions were similar to Alderman Navarrete's. I would ask that we take 1 through 6 and 8 through 11 and then 7 separately.
Alderman, can you repeat the request?
I would make a motion to approve 1 through 6 and then 8 through 11.
So move.
And take 7 separately.
So the first motion made by Alderman Patton is to approve 1 through 6. Is there a second? Second. Second by Alderman Gardner. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on items 9A, 1 through 6?
Navarrete.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Item 7, let's just table item 7, Alderman, and we'll provide to City Council. We've sent you guys three versions of this, and we'll make sure we send it to you again and ask the attorney to draft another RFP for this. Again, this is to move the initiative forward for our first-time homebuyers program. Alderman, you were on the Zoom call for this, so we want to make sure that you get all your questions answered. So item 7, let's just table until the next City Council meeting. Item 8 through 11, is there a motion to approve item 8 through 11?
Make a motion to approve items 8 through 11.
Motion made by Alderman Patton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Smith.
I thought it was Tillman.
Tillman. Second by Alderman Tillman. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on items 8 through 11?
Navarrete.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
On a roll call of 7 voting zero, 7 voting yes, 0 voting no, 0 vote present, motion passes for item 8 through 11. Item B, building permits, new garage construction and fence variance for... 1901.
Dalton Road.
Would the council mind taking both together or do you have any questions regarding item 2 and 3?
You can take them together.
Now, Alderman Tillman, did you make the motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman to approve items 2 and 3 on the agenda, seconded by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Navarrete.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Item C, resolutions and ordinances. We have two on the agenda. I will turn item 2 on the agenda over to Alderman Tillman for a brief explanation, and then also Attorney Stillman, if you want to interject as well. Alderman Tillman.
Yes, so item number 2, this was put on the agenda as a proactive measure to ensure we are aware of the high volume of individuals that enter our city on one-way buses with no housing plans, safety plans, or curb plans, et cetera. This ordinance creates an application process for those buses where they are required to identify the individuals, the safety plans, and other pieces of information that will be useful to our city, our city's overall safety plan. It also creates an enforcement mechanism for violations. So I don't know if anybody have any questions, but the ordinance, I believe, was included
That was very well explained. I'm okay with it.
Who's responsible for following up on the application process or the enforcement mechanism?
Chief of Police, Police Chief.
This was initiative brought by Alderman Tillman in conjunction with everything that's happening, and so I wanted to make sure that we bring it before the council, just so we won't get surprised, or get surprises in our community. Are there any questions?
I'd just like to say something. I'm glad we've taken action. Just watched recently on the news that other communities, just this past weekend, were swamped with migrants surrounding cities of Chicago, and other communities have taken the step to create some enforcement mechanisms. So I'm proud to know that we're doing so. Thank you, Alderman Tillman. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you. So item C, resolutions and ordinances, item 1 and item 2, Alderman Tillman.
I'd like to make the motion to approve items 1 and 2 as presented.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman, seconded by Alderman Williams.
And Smith.
The clerk said rock, paper, scissors. It was Alderman. It was Alderman Smith who seconded the motion, Alderman Williams. Motion made by Alderman Tillman, seconded by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Navarrete.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Smith.
D, financial matters, 1 through 14. We'd like to remove item 8 from the agenda, table item 8. So amended motion to remove item 8. Are there any questions regarding items 1 through 7 and then 9 through 14? Alderman Navarrete.
Item number 7 was payments to Farnsworth Group for Project 0231718. That was the facility evaluation for 555 Burnham. Do we have that document, that evaluation document, before we pay this invoice? Do we have the evaluation report that we can see?
Alderman, I would ask that you send this, any questions before the council meeting? I don't have it, but I will make sure that you get it. So if the council can incline and approve this tonight, and we'll make sure you get the evaluation tomorrow.
Does anyone know if the, I just want to know if the evaluation's complete? Do we have it? We could approve it. I would just like to have it, I guess is my comment.
I will check, Alderman.
I mean, I'm assuming it is if they're invoicing us for it, so.
I will check, Alderman.
Who does that go to usually? Yourself or Economic Development or?
Yes, it goes to me or Economic Development, but I'm not aware. I may have it or I may not have it. I have to check my email, but after the meeting, we'll make sure you get it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question or a discussion. In the, so I guess it would be within the bill listing. Is that only for, and I'm asking this question because I noticed it after the fact you sent the information well in enough time, but it's the holidays. Farnsworth is also listed with a number of itemized billings in the bill listing, but should that appear on the agenda so the constituents can see what we're paying? I also have a question about hotel stays and certain vehicles, as well as another vendor janitorial service that I didn't see any information on within the packet. It just appeared as a bill.
We sent this agenda to the Alderman five days. The Alderman requested the agenda five days. Bringing the questions before the City Council meeting when the treasurer is not here does not, I can't get that information for you. So I would ask the Alderman, before the council meeting, call the treasurer or call Finance and get those answers to your questions, because I can't answer those questions tonight.
And that's understandable. I did not, I would not think that the treasurer wouldn't be here at a council meeting, so...
So if you can, if you can email the treasurer with those questions and provide those questions and give him the time to do that, I'm sure he has the questions and the backup.
So can we take these items separately until we can get the answer from the treasurer? Because the last council meeting, I still didn't get any of the information, and I don't know if the treasurer has it or not. He's not here for me to ask.
I would ask that we approve them tonight, provided that the treasurer give you the questions. But don't hold up the process, but if the treasurer provides you the questions and the answer, he always does, so I would ask that the council approve them tonight, provided with the amendment that the treasurer provides you the information.
And I don't know, did anybody receive last council meeting's request of documents?
Yes, to your point, I did email the treasurer. I have not received anything. I emailed him yesterday. I sent him an email in reference to the five items that were removed from the bill list last council meeting. Have not received anything from the treasurer. It is to my understanding that he's out today, taking care of some personal issues.
Alderman Gardner, can you make a motion, provided that the treasurer provides those documents to the Alderman, at least by the next City Council meeting, for those items that are in question?
I would like to table... I would like to remove item, the Apple Chevrolet payment in the sum of $1,500 until we get supporting documents from the emergency bill list. But I would like to make a motion to approve financial items 1 through 14.
With the removal, table of item number 8, correct?
With the removal of, yes, correction, item number 8 that was tabled.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Navarrete.
I apologize. Just for clarity, we're omitting one item from the bill list?
Yes.
Can you repeat what that item was? I'm sorry.
The item in question was the item...
Under the emergency payment.
Under the emergency bill listing. It was Chevrolet at the request of Alderman Navarrete.
I think it was Alderman. Was that my request? All right. So I apologize. If I could motion, can I have a discussion?
We're in the middle of roll call.
Can I have a discussion?
We're in the middle of roll call.
Is that a no?
We're in the middle of a roll call.
I understand. I'm asking for discussion. Does that mean no?
No. Please vote yes and no, Alderman.
May I have a discussion?
We just had a discussion, Alderman. Please vote yes and no, Alderman.
So there are items on the bill list to remove, so we just remove those items and then we could pass the remainder of the bill list? Is that correct?
Yes.
So how do we, do we just call them out, which items we want removed from the bill list? Or do we just submit them in writing right now? Or do we... Or do we just say that the items?
If the Alderman cannot submit the items and questions to the treasurer before the meeting, removing those items at the city council meeting is not proper, Alderman. Again, you had the opportunity to ask the questions of the city treasurer who's not here tonight. We're passing the bill listing and asking the treasurer to provide you those questions, provided that you send him an email. He's not here tonight and he'll get those to you. If they're not, if they're not in supplemental package, which they should be...
They're not.
Then we'll make sure that they are, because...
So I, we removed items in the December fourteenth bill list.
Yes.
We requested that supplemental. We have not received it two weeks later, so that's two weeks. I mean, so we do ask for the supplemental information. We're just not receiving the supplemental information.
So the motion on the table tonight, there's a motion and a second, is to provide the, to amend and remove one item from the agenda and then direct the city treasurer to provide you the remainder of those items that you requested before the next council meeting. He's not here tonight, so he can't provide it tonight.
Right, so can we remove those until he's here to answer those questions? What is the parliamentary answer?
Sorry. So you're asking if you can take it off the agenda, is that right?
Yes.
Specific number, which one?
So it appears in a bill listing, so it doesn't have a number on the agenda. It is only something documented that the council can see.
You can, what I would recommend I've seen done is you can, you can approve them contingent within, receive the information within forty-eight hours if you don't. So hold the payment for forty-eight hours.
Mm-hmm.
You can do it in that way. And that's usually, as I understand it, with the Prompt Payment Act, when was, I, when was the bill actually given to the city? Do we know?
Do you know when it was? But we, we did this two weeks ago at the last council meeting, pulled it off of the bill listing.
It's the same bill?
These are different bills and we still haven't received those bills from two weeks ago.
So what I would recommend, similar, what I would recommend is that you can approve them in holding contingent on receiving the information. So you could say, and it would be held until you receive that information within forty-eight hours, assuming that the information's there and that would probably, that could correct the issue that you don't, you want to make sure there's the backup. It sounds like there's the backup. So rather than holding it for, and we, the Illinois Prompt Payment Act requires that municipalities and government pay within X amount of time. So my, my recommendation is you approve it contingent on receiving that information within X amount of time, whatever the board, similar, I think, Mayor, that's a little, that's close to what you're, you're saying as well.
That's what the motion is.
Yeah.
And if it's not received within forty-eight hours, it's just not, it's considered not approved? Or is it just considered tabled?
Well, I mean, again, and I know this, this board had an issue in the past where you could do a motion to reconsider the payment, right? I don't know if you ever want to get into that again, but that's always, that's always a solution, because under city code, something that's not approved can always be reconsidered at the next meeting.
But my question is, if we approve it contingent to a particular act, the act doesn't happen, is it viewed as if it was not approved or is it viewed as if it is tabled?
I would, I would say that it would, if it's contingent, the action, the legal action has to be that you receive it within that amount of time or else it's null and void.
Who's the determining factor?
Null and void.
Sorry, Alderman. But if we approve it contingent upon receiving it within forty-eight hours, who determines if Alderman Wilson, Alderman Tillman, Alderman Williams get the backup document, but the four of us don't? What's the determining factor there?
But it's more of a policy where you would eventually have to do that on a policy end.
And I'm sure the treasurer is not going to send, because this information is coming from the treasurer, so we'll direct the treasurer, the motion directs the treasurer to provide that to you within forty-eight hours. So hopefully he provides it either tomorrow or with the new year being, he can provide it by Tuesday, January second, to the council. Again, please, let's not do this at the city council meetings. We send it to you guys five days in advance of the meeting. You should be able to formulate your questions and send them to the city treasurer. If he's not getting back to you, let's make sure it's removed from the agenda. So Alderman Gardner, let's make sure that these items, that they don't send you questions before the meeting. Let's not go through this exercise at every meeting, removing items that are not, the questions are not sent to the treasurer and getting that information back. I'll make sure that the treasurer answers those questions and see what is remaining out. I have my notes for that, because I, it was my understanding that the treasurer provided that information.
I didn't receive it.
If he hasn't, we'll make sure that he provides it, but he's not here.
Mayor, may I just ask my final question to the attorney? So are we able to, and Carrie Lance sort of said yes two weeks ago. Are we able to take the bill listing separately from all of the other financial matters?
Yeah. Of course.
We can.
You can always do that. But I would recommend, again, I haven't seen the bill. I don't know what the issue is and when, when the city received it, there is the Prompt Payment Act, although in my other municipalities that I represent, this is what I would recommend because sometimes there's misinformation and the board gets the information, they're satisfied. So the solution, I would say, what I would recommend is to do it within a timeframe and essentially that the payment's held, even if it's electronic, it's not sent or the check isn't sent until you receive it. So that, that's a potential solution. But to answer your question, yeah, I mean, the board can always refuse payment on a certain item. But I'm just trying to solve the issue and prevent from any Prompt Payment Act issue.
Clerk, continue with the roll call, please.
Navarrete?
Are we amending it?
Yes. Yeah, he passed it as amended.
Contingent?
That's the motion, Alderman.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wilson?
Yes, contingent on forty-eight hour notice.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Unfinished business, Alderman Smith?
Just want to remind the residents, the next monthly town hall is January, Saturday, January the twentieth, DA's banquet hall from ten AM to noon. If you have any questions on that or any other issues, please contact the office at seven zero eight eight nine one eight one nine seven or email a smith@city.org. Enjoy your holiday and be safe.
Unfinished business, Alderman Patton?
Thank you, Mayor. Just like to wish all the residents a happy new year. Continue to encourage residents to call my office, seven oh eight eight nine one eight one nine six, with any issues, aside from any firework complaints on New Year's Eve. Please call the police with those. Sorry, Chief.
Alderman Gardner?
Thank you. I would just like to wish all of the Fifth Ward residents a happy and prosperous 2024. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Williams, unfinished?
Happy new year, everyone.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Tillman, unfinished?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Alderman Wilson, unfinished?
Yes, reminder, January third, 2024, that's our first, second ward meeting, Higher Ground Community Church, four fifteen Saginaw, six thirty PM. Safe travels to all of our college students going back home after the holiday. My CJ, I love you so much and I can't wait to visit you in Atlanta when you return to Morehouse College. Thank you for the kind words that you've been calling and expressing over my family's Christmas greeting card. If you have not received it, please call me and let me know and I'll make sure you get it. I know you all like to see the children as they have grown. Call me at seven oh eight five eight six four nine nine zero. From now on, you'll be receiving just me as our dear Lauren, the intern, has taken a government job and will be going overseas this month. And so we wish her congratulations and the best future in her future endeavors. Lauren has really been an asset to the Second Ward. Again, should you need me, call me, seven oh eight five eight six four nine nine zero. You don't want to talk to me by phone, go ahead and text me. The senior snow list has been sent in to the mayor's office. There will be some kind of verification, so please answer your phones, look through the mail and see what needs to be done for you to be approved for that. If you do not receive it or you haven't sent me your information, I know I am just being informed about our ninety-plus club residents, the ninety-year-old residents will be taken care of. Again, seven oh eight five eight six four nine nine zero. Blessings to you and your family. Happy new year and I pray to God it's a prosperous one. May everyone in your family be touched, be healed, and be on the path to greatness. Have a good one.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Everett, unfinished business?
No, just touching on an earlier topic. I know the housing program is a good one, Mayor. I think you kind of summed it up. It was a great phone call. Seems like we've got some really good people working on the projects, our economic development team, the permits office, crime-free housing. I know Alderman Gardner was able to get, we can't pronounce her name, but a very intelligent woman from the South River Land Bank.
Stalene Alderman?
Stalene. Stalene Haddard. So, yeah, it was, it was a joy learning from her and hearing her talk and kudos to the team for taking it to where it is now. So I look forward to seeing that final, that final draft of the, of the, of the plan. So happy new year, everyone. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I forgot one thing, if I might.
Alderman Patton?
I'd like to welcome Attorney Stillman to our chambers. Look forward to working with you. It's great to meet you.
All right, everyone, that concludes our last meeting of 2023. Again, from the city council, we want to wish everyone a prosperous 2024, that being the last order of business before 2023. Is there a motion to adjourn the city council meeting?
So move.
Second.
Six forty-seven PM. Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at six forty-eight PM.